Asstada, asstada tuma. Asstada tuma. Asstada, asstada tuma. Asstada tuma. Asstada tuma. I'm very sorry. Asstada tuma. I'm very sorry. Asstada tuma. Asstada tuma. Asstada tuma.
Are you disappointed, sir? So Representative Yekke Kalubah failed to address the Speaker or the Chair to make amendment to a motion. And he clearly see that to be dishonorable and against the rules of the House of Representatives. So he was asked to be thrown out of session. They asked him on many different occasion to address the Presiding and the Co-Presiding and his gentleman colleagues, um, the gentle colleagues, so... I'm a colleague, I'm a colleague. I'm a colleague. I'm a colleague, I'm a colleague. Please, I'm a colleague. So again, that is Emmanuel Dan, he's from the minority bloc, um, in solidarity with Representative Yekke Kalubah. But Yekke, yeah, Yekke Kalubah was asked, uh, asked because on numerous occasions, he refused to address the Presiding and the Co-Presiding and his honorable colleagues before making amendment to a motion. Uh, but, um, in the spur of that, they have asked him to, uh, leave the session because he has refused to address the Presiding. So his colleague, um, Emmanuel Dan is kind of furious about the decision. And he said he will retaliate if that were to happen to him. So it's a, it's a bit of conversation, um, around the chair. There you see the Speaker, the Deputy Speaker in a tight conversation. Before then, all the lawmakers had swam the Deputy Speaker to have a close-up conversation.
That is, Ava June, after the electoral attempts, uh, under, before Messalina, after a D, that is, Plenaretto Muto Executive, if they accept that, I'll be ready to vote. Thank you.
Sir, I said.
With the amendment, I'd like to vote. All those, against and nil, the vote is carried. Call for petition.
There is no petition, Honorable Speaker.
Call for standing committee's report.
No standing committee report.
Call for special committee's report.
No special committee report.
Call for motion, resolution.
No motion, no deal, no resolution.
Business of Speaker's death.
Yes, sir. Communication from President of Liberia. January twenty seven, twenty twenty five. Honorable Rache Nawe Koom, Speaker, Honorable House of Representatives, Capital Bureau, Capital Hill, Moruga, Liberia. Mister Speaker, this is to inform you and to you, Honorable House of Representatives, that I will be traveling to the Afslam Tanzania to attend the Africa Heads of State Energy Summit from January twenty seven, twenty nine, twenty twenty five. I will depart the country on January twenty seven, twenty twenty five. While I am away from the country, Honorable Sadasta and President, Minister of State for Presidential Affairs, will chair the cabinet meeting consultation with the Vice President and by my direction via telephone. Tell me guys sincerely, Joseph Hipopla, I'm senior. Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, the Speaker, Honorable Ladies and Gentlemen, that is a review of a communication from the President of the Republic of Liberia. Thank you, sir.
Lieutenant, next, appearance of the Commissioner General of the LTA, Anas.
Our so folks, we had to talk about to come back in my eye.
So we expect the authorities of the, um, says LTA, Longstasia MTN, Orange Liberia. So a quick reminder of the days activities, um, earlier you saw or witnessed the, um, witnessed, uh, Representative Yekke Kalubah being thrown out of session because he refused to address the Presiding, the Co-Presiding and his honorable colleagues. So on the basis of that, he was asked to leave a session because he cannot, um, and that just the normal order. You address the Presiding, who's whoever was sitting in the Presiding Chair, you address that Chair, you address the Deputy Speaker or the Co-Presiding. You address your honorable colleagues before speaking on the floor, that's the normal order and it's compulsory. Even guest do that. Other than that means that legislatively you are out of order. So on the basis of that, he was asked to leave session.
Welcome our President, we, our witnesses, we want to welcome the President of United Nigeria, President, our Majesty President, please.
Yeah, Big Baba.
Honorable Speaker. Honorable Deputy Speaker, Speaker of the Parliament. The head of Longstar, the president. Besides, this one could be perfection of our two. I have to talk to, talk with the Liberian Communication Authority. Because he said that they not receive the letter, which is true. But when the Sparta told the communication there, on the routine, to get, and the security, the communication. So our two, I didn't let that, they should come. So as far as, they should, until the guests, they use themselves, they don't know that they are representative. So the opponent of this, do you approach the Presiding?
So the two Maryland County lawmakers are the proponents of the communication that prompted the invitation of these witnesses, uh, to their backdrop a bit, um, letter raise concern about poor network across the eastern region. And, um, this is unique to other parts of Liberia, so they should address themselves to, um, the issue of poor network facility across Liberia. So if you are just coming our way, I'd love to say welcome, you are watching Spoon TV Live. We are here at the House of Representatives, my name is Haji Masale, bringing you this live coverage. My colleague, Chokon Flamman is also, um, here. So you listen to the Deputy Chief Click, um, he wrote Longstasia MTN and, um, Orange, they could not receive the letters on grounds that they were on a retreat. Uh, but through the intervention of, uh, Honorable Ava June, they had to place call to them individually to come and attach importance to this, uh, communication.
Your Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, distinguished and leisure, my name is Raq Kai, the Deputy Mayor of Tewa, thank you.
Minister of Post and Telecommunication, um, Representative from...
Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, Honorable Representatives, my name is Ali Fakim, the Deputy CEO for Longstasia MTN.
Longstasia MTN.
Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, Honorable House of Representatives, and of the Speaker and Deputy President, Director of the Legal Regulatory, and Secretary General of Orange Liberia.
Orange Liberia.
Honorable Speaker, Deputy Speaker, Honorable Representatives, Greg Cadoula, Technical Director of Orange Liberia.
Technical Director for Orange Liberia.
Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, House of Representatives, Representative, my name is Damien Marieven, I'm the Chief Technical Officer for the Medical Center.
Longstasia.
Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, Distinguished Mother of the House, I'm Antonio Alor Price Edeka, Honorable Counselor in Tia, Liberia.
Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, and all the Executives and the respected members, my name is Idris, representing Longstasia MTN.
So Longstasia MTN is represented by several of the top powers.
Honorable Speaker and Honorable Deputy Speaker, in the honorable body of the House of Representatives, Isaac Ako, Orange Liberia.
So you have Orange Liberia, you have, um, Longstasia MTN, you have, uh, LTA, you have, um, Minister of Post and Telecommunication.
Dear Honorable Speaker and distinguished colleagues, I write to pray the endurance of these partners by the invite the authority of the Liberian Telecommunication Authority, LTA, along with their technical team, as well as the authority of Longstar MTN and Orange Liberia, to provide technical videos regarding the constant network problems within the southeastern region of Liberia. Honorable Speaker and esteemed colleagues, the southeastern region has been experiencing persistent network issues that have severely impacted the daily lives of our citizens. Their poor network condition has posed significant challenges and hardships affecting normal economic activities and caused unprosperity to the people. Therefore, reliable networks have disrupted business operations, leading to financial losses for internal workers and trainers who rely on stable coordination of transactions and coordination including mobile service services. Honorable Speaker and distinguished colleagues, given the authority and gravity of the situation, it is imperative that we seek a comprehensive understanding of the technical issues and the measures being taken to address them. Therefore, a respectful request that the LTA, Longstar MTN, and propose solutions to alleviate the network problems in the southeastern region. Thank you for your attention to this urgent matter. We firmly believe that these projects will significantly enhance the quality of life for rural dwellers in our district, fostering a sense of community pride and cooperation. Your generous contribution would not only help us achieve these goals, but also inspire other communities to also take their initiative. Honorable Anthony F. Williams, the second communication. Honorable Speaker, Rache Nawe Koom, Speaker of the Fifty Fifth Legislature, Capital Hill, Moruga, Liberia. Dear Speaker Koom, Honorable Speaker and esteemed colleagues, I wish to draw the attention of the Plenaretto the significant deficiencies in the GSM network coverage within Maryland County. A staggering eighty percent of the residents in Maryland County are currently facing challenges related to inadequate mobile network connectivity. Consequently, I propose that we expand an invitation to the management representatives of Longstar GSM and Orange GSM to come to the Plenaretto to provide clarity regarding the factors contributing to the inadequate network services currently affect the Maryland County and to dispense potential solutions moving forward. Thank you for your consideration respectfully, Honorable Austin Bintella, Representative, District Number Three, Maryland County. The communication through all of the partners that will invite the content within my seat and I ring one from our central Longstar. Dear General Manager, I present to you compliments and right, our Director of the Honorable House of Representatives in session, to invite you to appear before the full Plenaretto on Tuesday, January twenty twenty five, at ten AM at the Moruga City Hall. The purpose of your appearance is to address issues raised by Honorable Anthony F. Williams and Honorable Austin Bintella, Representative, eleven districts, number two and three, Maryland County, in their respective communications and past in relation to your operation in the country. You will also be addressing these issues holistically in regards to the coverage of the entire country. Thanks for your usual cooperation, sincerely, I see your attention at the table. Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, distinguished and honorable ladies and gentlemen, that is the communication and invitation that was sent to our members. We receive a communication from Longstar, destinate, and the others that we read. Dear Honorable Members, I bring you greetings from heart and steel, and writing to inform you that our Row D, Chief Executive Officer of Longstar Service MTN, will regretably be unable to attend this Plenaretto session due to my scheduled travel from northern south of the country. And Mr. Ali Paki, Deputy Chief Executive Officer of Longstar Service MTN, will however represent a company during this engagement. Mr. Paki normally has home and is responsible for all regulatory issues. He is fully authorized to speak and act on behalf of Longstar Service MTN on all matters relevant to the company. I have full confidence in his capability to incredibly convey our position and to engage in meaningful dialogue with the Honorable Members of the House of Representatives. Thank you for your understanding and support, and look forward to continuing our partnership and engaging with our partner from my return. Your Honorable Speaker, Row D, Chief Executive Officer of Longstar Service MTN. Thank you, Honorable Speaker. Thank you, Deputy Speaker, we read a communication with AK, sorry, to please for our witnesses for our own.
Please release your right hand, call your name, the physician you are presenting in repeat after me. I, who solemnly swear, at the testimony I am about to give, as it should be so this hearing, will be the two and not the one to, who have me done. Thank you, please have blessings. Distinguished Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, in my distinguished, honorable ladies and gentlemen, the witnesses are hereby qualified for today's hearing, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Ali, I want to report that to people for the issue, and start with the movement.
Come with me. Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, distinguished colleagues, Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker. It was interesting to know that today I'm happy that Longstar Service is here, Orange is here, as well as the regulator, because... Everybody is one of the people, so today, it's almost parallel, so I just want to put a question that Longstar Service, Orange, actually have people very bad. For example, some east Maryland, people travel from far distances just to come to people for medical care with the money on their phone, when they get to people, their intention is to make out one day to people, but when they get to people, for that one week, no there, who pay for money, who pay for meeting. All these industries have been based on our people, that is what we have system, almost into the business sector. Nowadays, our people travel with money on their phone, five hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, they go to the hospital bank. Or if any business person travels anywhere in the southeastern county, they are not going to our country, like my lady Smo said, you find it difficult to get the money on your phone. And at the end of the day, we just time ourselves for the one Longstar, the one second, and no for our business. This is the first time of Longstar being here for several. I can remember when we talked work in twenty twenty-three, we also invited LTA to spend the office, they feed a day off, it has a sugar protein foundation that they will pay back a good money on their phone, that's not an issue. People are dying for their service provider, you know, if your money is on your phone, you cannot get it out to go for medical care. If your money is on your phone, you cannot get it out to do your business. Take it in your mind, apart from that, the scary aspect of this situation, somebody is a very important player, out of the city, on you some internal expensive place, and they want to form a security program and take more. How can they reach out to the security sector when Longstar, Cephalo, and have a little value? No, never. So, Distinguished Speaker, distinguished colleagues, this situation that Longstar, Cephalo continue to disappear property to some people, I ask that we all, no need a trip to the place, so that Longstar, Cephalo, with no Orange and Longstar, the Orange with no phone data, that we were in a family of people. So our presence here is to make sure that the business services of our people be provided. So we can't come here and allow Low Star to be such a party, making us very ready and everything for our people. So I beg very soon to the security.
Here is Anthony Williams from Plivo Southern District, Maryland County. One of the proponents of the communication that brought about the witnesses here today.
If you want to go to the market, go to the market. If you have, no, if you want to go there, go there. If not going there, you can't go there. So man, if you want to go there, you can't do it. You can't take it from there. Remember. Close to who? You can't take it from there. That's not what doing. You can't go to the market for them. They were towards himself. Yeah, they were towards himself. You can't work, you don't to pass around with my cousin. You can't work. Yeah, you'll be. Sorry, my girl. I'll complete you first.
Honorable Speaker, honorable Deputy Speaker, my girl, I can't, I'm, I'm not trying to be provocative. Yeah, no, but after me, no, listen now. No, I don't try to be provocative. The only thing I'm trying to tell you is that, we're not putting a market in it. Don't, don't go around to it, because I'll tell you. The, the, the high, the high local.
You don't, you don't want to do it.
I have.
You're supposed to be close to him because anytime the market, you see what happened, you're gonna, I'm supposed to be close to them. You don't know, but you're, no, I'm not taking the market to check it for you. But I'll be close to the person so I can carry market for the person. If I'm missing a guy, I'll get someone to tell him, but he's here, what the whole thing's in ox.
Yeah, because the way he stood, the way he stood, he was not getting anything.
So the way the, the person I gave him, the, the, the time yesterday, hey, something passing, I got, ah, where your traffic signal, I'm going for you, I'm supposed to carry market.
No, but, no, when you stood on your chest now, you, you never for, for so seconds, it, it was not.
You, you, you had to be, thinking the person, man, you don't show your, yeah, you didn't feel it.
Um, sir.
The high is supposed to be here, everybody work together still.
Distinguished police.
It's, it's okay.
I'm in the state of honor. The Speaker and Deputy Speaker, in terms of the consultation, I am acting.
Thank you, thank you very much, thank you very much. Honorable attorneys, honorable attorney, before mercy, the matter falls down. We have a visitor from our tier. We ask the citizen, the people, the audience. Did you do it yourself, or? We have a visitor from our tier, please do that same. Another commission also, the senior operator, we need another commission as well.
The speaker, honorable Deputy Speaker, I'm the head of the House of Representatives. And he is the highest pastor, permission of our tier.
Thank you. You must have been free, eh, 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 honorable.
I'm waiting after me, quietly, unfortunately, after me. I, want to come here. Who solemnly swear, I testify that I'm here to relax today, yeah, eh, will be the truth, not for the truth. Who have me done?
Thank you. The bossy, honorable Speaker, please.
Honorable Speaker, honorable Deputy Speaker, and my distinguished colleague. When you see two club pictures from a particular county writing the communication on the issue of bad in the county, this speaks to you of the gravity of the situation. Honorable Speaker, I'm very disappointed today. And I want to transfer this disappointment to the LTA and the two mobile phone companies, or the three mobile phone companies that we have, who should be providing services to our people but have failed to provide these effective services over a period of time. I'll tell you, honorable Speaker, that Monrovia is not Liberia. Inasmuch as we suffer by networking in Monrovia, you will be astonished to know that when you get to Maryland County, you will hardly be able to use your Low Star or your Orange mobile phone network, or your Orange mobile phone that you have because we hardly have any network in Maryland County. Talk less of most of the towns and villages that we have. It is not that people do not have the money to pay for credit. There are people who have phones, there are people who have SIM cards, there are people who buy, who recharge. Yet and still, these companies you see here have failed to provide the services for which they subscribe to. And it is very disappointing and disheartening, honorable Speaker. There are a lot of citizens, including myself, from Maryland County, who buy credit. And when you put your three days on your phone, for good three days, you will not have network. That money will go for free. There are people who put mobile phones, you will transfer money from here to your relatives back home. That money will stay on their phone, they will not be able to take it out because of bad network. There are businesses over there, honorable Speaker, that should be thriving and performing their business activities, using internet and other things, but they do not have the network to do that. And today it's good that the LTA is here so that they can explain reasons why they are not checking up on these companies to provide the services for which they have subscribed from. And the LTA will have to make it known today. And as we hear today, honorable Speaker, it is good that we have the representatives of Low Star, it is good that we have the representative of Selfon, uh, Orange, and LTA, eh, 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 and LTA, the, uh, LTCF. We, we, we only have them on our side. So, honorable Speaker, we will wish that these companies gave reasons why they have failed. It is a major challenge, honorable Speaker, it is a major challenge in the Southeast. We know very well that we wrote about Maryland, the Southeast is facing serious challenges when it comes to these mobile phone companies. And they are here and just operating in Monrovia, they bless, they left the rest of the county. Today, I want these companies to tell us that partly they are not capacitated to perform in the Southeast so that we can start looking for other companies to come and perform services in the Southeast. I submit for now. Thank you very much.
Adi, Fabinho, honorable Speaker, honorable Deputy Speaker, honorable President. Uh, so, we have received the communication and, uh, as you can see, we are here. It makes directly engage and a dialogue how we can resolve this issue. We are aware of this. So, I'm not here in any way to deny that we do have issue or have some issues. However, we have been working on the network, uh, in, in, in the Southeast. Uh, in the past few months, uh, the network availability, which is how we can measure this thing, uh, was at ninety-five percent, which means there is still a lot of room for improvement. We have already been working on certain things to put in place. So looking at the network availability when we're doing the average, it was average at ninety-five percent. Now ninety-five percent over hundred doesn't necessarily mean that's a good number. What I'm trying to say is that we need to aim for ninety-nine percent. So this is what I was going to. To get to the ninety-nine percent at least, which is normally the standard, it is, there are certain things that we are putting in place, certain measures that we are putting in place. And this did not come from the fact that you were writing in the letter. This game, this was already has to plan, there are certain things that we have already been putting in place, certain, uh, lending from this, certain microwave connections that we are connecting, more what we have to get in the Southeast. And this will facilitate all the coverage and area. I'm not going to say this is going to happen in twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven, or end of twenty thirty-five. We are talking in the next few months. I cannot give a confirmed speed or date that this will happen, but I do know that the schedule for this modernization to compete will be around the middle of this year. Hopefully, by God's grace, it will be before that. So these are the things that we are putting in place. Now, in regard to improving it even more, we do have challenges that we are facing in, in, in the Southeast. We have a lot of challenges we are facing in the Southeast. And some of these challenges are real. For one, when we are talking, I heard that there was some complaints about cashing out money from mobile phone. For the record, at certain times, we have actually sent cash from Monrovia to go all the way to Maryland, which normally is a trip that takes over twenty-four hours just to be able to cash out because it is not always easy to find the liquid customers necessary for that. There are certain things that we can, uh, uh, do from our side. In the service centers, we can make sure that there's cash available, but there is always going to be a certain shortage to certain extent. Now, I know the, the problem more is the availability of the network for people to be able to do the cash out. Now, from this side, yes, we are working on improving this. We will certainly improve it and we will be in this situation where the honorable members of this, the honorable members will tell us that, yes, they have seen the improvement. Even after the improvement, there will always be room for improvement. The technology is featured on a daily basis. January, for example, December, January, we face another issue, which is normally the hammer tap, which is weather related. Some of these towers, they use microwave connections and the hammer tap can also affect them to a certain extent. So these are all some of the measures that we are putting in place to try to prevent the problem in the future. I'm not going to stand here and tell you, we don't have a problem now, we do have a problem. But we do also have a plan on how to improve it. The other thing we need to also look into is the population. So there's also part of this coverage that normally comes from the universal access. And this coverage specifically is on the rural side because we can focus on major cities. For example, uh, uh, we have in, in, in seven sites that can take four G, which are normally concentrated in the major cities. After that, we also have other rural sites which can also take voice, they cannot take data. And that was being completely honest. Because it's not feasible for us to have thirty forty sites with four G coverage in, 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 in Maryland. It's simply economically not possible. So, I mean, this is what I have to say and, uh, we hope that you will give us a chance to prove to you that we are actually working on improving the network availability in, in, in Maryland and the Southeast.
So are we, are we in the, maybe at this time or waiting for another? Have you presented, have you prepared anything, have you prepared? Okay, I'm expecting. Yeah, you see? Hold on, the other vision, other vision did not. Let me say, oh, the ladies do, other vision did not, gentlemen, I can't find it. Okay, no time, no time, no time, no time, no time, right now, no time. Continue, no time, no time. Okay, so, the time is up. The time is up. Time to figure, figure the balance to telecommunication, not next. My police, your observation is not that. But none, none, none. Hello, the witness on the floor, my police, the one on the floor. You see? I'm a busy, I'm a busy, call it, pray, pray the chair. Please apply the chair. So please go ahead.
Honorable Speaker, honorable Deputy Speaker, it's too busy around the house.
Oh, I don't want to play upon the bizarre, play upon the bizarre. I'm standing here, yeah. Okay, please upon the bizarre, please, I beg you. Have mercy, the witness, please continue.
Honorable Speaker, honorable Deputy Speaker, distinguished members of the house, it's, it's a great privilege to step forward you and protect the human landscape of the technical intersection. Unfortunately, the complaint filed by the distinguished members of Maryland does not fit within the prep view of the protection corporation. Our network coverage is within what's around the Miami and currently as we sleep, we're not in the space of mobile morning, not in the space of infected voice monitor. But because we respect this term of body, it was important to come here and make the case for you that LTC has capacity to expand, but we need to be capitalized. If we are capitalized, able to bridge the gap along with the private players. So we are here to ensure that our people get good service. But with all our innovation, to expand our network into the rural areas of this country, we may not be able to bridge the gap. As we already have, it's safe enterprise must create it as a stimulator to support the private sector where they cannot reach. But again, we are too capacitated. So we are here to keep the task of our products and services to ensure our. So, we are here to give the task of our products and services to ensure our work out under back in the private sector. To ensure that it satisfies telecommunications expansion demand that they have in that cheap. But on the stimulus for MTF, we believe that there are a lot of offering. And it's obvious, after five to ten years, it's obvious the sector that you have an upgraded network. Each of those back hall, what we call, I'm telling you, see each of them caught in the tour right now. So, the change every six months to a year, amazing, but we're gonna work along with the same best we can put the service quality as a mission.
Thank you, we're not gonna worry.
So, the TECO representatives have just spoken, saying that the subject matter does not lie in the prayer group, but because of the respect to the honorable House of Representatives, they have to be represented.
As far as Orange is concerned, I would like to start by apologizing for the network issues in the Southeast, in Maryland County. We sincerely apologize for business governance and we are working hard to bring you the better network quality. Our technical team are starting already working on it. They have took some of these issues, but we are still working on it. I'd like to start by also saying that since storage took over the sample, we have invested to expand, to sustain the network more than two hundred forty-five million users. But this is not enough to cover the main cities that we are in that country. It's not enough to cover, to bring the great quantity of network before the market. And we are planning over the thousand years to improve. Last year, we brought really the roof, more than one hundred twenty-eight sites in the rural. We're putting four G network services. As far as Maryland is concerned, we currently have eleven, eleven sites in the county of Maryland. Regarding the issues that we are facing, we have many reasons. Some beyond our control and some we are working on. The one of the main issue on Southeast to have a sustainable, reliable network is the transmission. And last year, we completed what we call the ring that allow all the sites to be secured so that when we have an interruption on one of the sites, one of the up sites, the overs are not affected. This ring have been completed on the total Southeast from Grand Bazaar to Grand Day going through the Southeast. But this ring is not enough. We need to build another small ring in the middle so that if we have a hot somewhere, at least the south first pass is sustainable. And this is planned for this year. Our technical teams are working very hard on it to secure the network. And when we complete it, I think we have more sustainability in the network. So, we, during this, we face some challenges as my predecessor, Lou Star, said. And we are paying for understanding of these challenges. We all know the conditions to reach these areas. Even when we have issues to go through the road, it's not easy. So, these are some constraints that doesn't help us, not help us to act properly. For this year, we are planning to increase the coverage in the county of Maryland by putting five additional sites. Today, we have eleven. We are putting five additional sites for this year to improve the coverage and to sustain also the network. So, at this stage, I would like to stop here. I don't know if my technical team.
You're gonna go, you like?
If you want to add something, I say, it's okay, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. We're not going to, uh, post. And then LTC will be the floor for.
So, you have representatives from LTECO, LTC. You have Lou Star here, you have Orange, now Minister of Post and Telecommunication, the Minister himself, on the witness stand.
Distinguished members of the Congress. Honorable speaker, the issue of the network as a government we need to address from the ground. The Minister of Post and Telecommunication is the sector of the ministry and head of the sector. From the policy angle, we are reviewing the policy to ensure ring to, what is the intention? Services by, what? Areas that cannot be covered, I'm not sure, on our communication need to be addressed on the universal access program. That the form, the universal access form, that the mobile operator service provider put the bill towards. And for, remember, if that be, I didn't want to address the issues. But areas that cannot be covered, no form, they will to cover in the scale. The national operator as a government we need to empower them to build their capacity so that their role of the network in reaching fast as Maryland. When we receive the communication from your office, we look at the concern of our law because from that end, I talk about network company. And we contract Lou Star and to provide of a data in LTA, what we see from the list that they don't cover all of the county. So, honorable speaker, what we need to do from our end is to ensure that the national operator is built in a way that they know how their network does area to be able to cover area that the the operators cannot cover. So, now from our effort, honorable speaker, in Baza, we are also working with donors to ensure that we land the second tower cable in that area that will help to rule for nations to move their counties in the east, in the southeast. Major speaker, I think from our end, you know, the LTA to make sure that we reinforce the regulation that will compare the operators to provide quality of service for our people in this country. We are not saying that the quality of service that is given today is going to go. There is a fault in the network system that the authority need to reinforce the regulation to ensure that all facilities are ready. But from government perspective, we seek in that direction. Our programs as a government should be able to empower the national operator and honor the universal access program to cover those area that they cannot cover. We all know business institution will become the world of business. The world can have area where there is market. So, those area that they cannot gain the number of people in those area is our responsibility to show that this can cover the universal access program. So, honorable speaker, we can do our best to ensure.
Inquiry, honorable speaker, inquiry.
Honorable speaker, honorable representative speaker and distinguished colleagues. Uh, I'm listening to the Minister of Post and Telecom right now. I think the minister is more or less giving his personal opinion as to what he should be doing. We are not getting the facts and figures from him as to what are those actual plan that they have and that they are holding these mobile phone companies back. We're not getting those information from him. He's just giving his personal opinion. We need facts, we need figures, we need plans from this minister telling us what they are holding these companies back because we just listen to the management of these companies and they themselves seem not to have any future plan in covering the rest of the country.
Okay, thank you, okay, okay, we'll be sure. Thank you. And I just take note, like I said earlier, I just take note. As far as the commissioner from downtown present, they will have a floor. Honorable speaker, I, I, I heard the convo. But what, what we're saying here is that, major speaker, we are working along with the national authority, the LTA to ensure. Yeah, one more minute, Mr. Yeah. To ensure that they, they actually reinforce, enforce the regulation that will compare the service provider to ensure that there's quality of service, you know, right to our people in this country. Thank you, major speaker. Thank you very much. We're not going on that stage.
Major speaker, uh, the speaker. The speaker is the man of the house, represent. We are here, on behalf of the LTA as the regulator for the, for the sector, the Minister of Post, here the sector of regulatory purposes, which obviously have to do with, directly have to do with the activities of the companies. Major speaker, to begin with, the reason for being here is, in my opinion, is specific to Maryland by extension, and I hope have the attitude to say by extension, the, it's not extending to the region. Coverage. According to the conversation that we have invited us, specifically talks about the honorable from Maryland, Justin Taylor, Dr. Taylor. On the issue of coverage, they, they tend to go, the companies have given some insight. Particularly, for example, Orange has been able to specifically say that now they have eleven sites in the coming year. And I can confirm that because they have to grow out of the areas. They furnish the mission and furnish the right data of those plans. We ourselves receive these plans and follow through with them. So, I can confirm that that plan is before us as to whether they will perform in six months to go through the year and they are again to say yes. But at least I can confirm that Orange has a plan to do with the show five sites. If they have, they definitely for now, as a short five, that's almost, that's almost fifty percent. So, that's for the country. Major speaker, who would that be, speaker? In addition to the issue of coverage, this
System.
A huge concern of the quality of service. So, for example, people will complain that the place of call, and for some reason, the call just dropped. Technology, sometimes it's easy, you know, and those are, it's a technology, it's a force. It's, it's the technology of this for this thing. So, the LTA, the LTA, until three months ago, the issue of quality of service for just two policy measures. As it says now, there is a, there is a consumer protection regulation that has been passed. In that color boy, it makes it mandatory now for the company to show that there is a quality of service. So, I can confirm that there is a plan to grow out in these areas, increasing coverage. But the LTA is particularly concerned on the quality. There are a couple of concerns and although one of my representatives raised a concern three days ago, that you, that I put my money on the phone and before I, I flip, the money is gone. All of these things, there are measures now being put in place. Sometimes, major speaker, and I, honorable speaker, I still, I mean, I still, members of the house. Distinguished members of the house. There is an issue that we have to clarify. Sometimes is an issue of promotional offers. And then there's an issue of direct dashboard. For example, you won't follow us from a room directly. You don't have to apply any promotion. It is expected. It is permission. My information to the witnesses is the witnesses when invited for a particular subject matter. And our particular subject matter is the bad network service in Maryland County. And more to that, the witness on the stand currently is the regulator. So, I would want for the regulator to speak directly to the oversight being exercised as a result of minimizing the challenges our people are faced with in the Southeastern region. That's my information.
Luther.
Thank you, major speaker, I would definitely speak up. Speaker, members of the house. With that, at least there is a direction for us. But I was, but I was trying to do, but to make sure that we, as a regulator, to stay step on the table. But major speaker, I would definitely speak up, I still, members of the house. Same numbers of the House. Maryland in the Southeastern Region. I'd like to, from me, because we don't have the data here, we will be ready so that we can supply for this, after this hearing, to state the specific plan, not just for Maryland, but how the expansion plan, for particularly for Maryland. As a regulator and through our oversight responsibility, I can confirm some of the effective efforts that are being made by the two companies to strengthen services in this region, to provide the specifics on what is being done, how many sites we take in this particular place, in other counties, obviously we cover Maryland, but just to make sure that we all have an idea on the entire plan for the next year. Mr. Speaker, who would that be, Mr. Speaker? Same numbers for how, I can pledge to provide that, uh, information to you. Uh, the reason why I was trying to give additional information was just to measure that concern for the money that may see on the phone, uh, time I didn't charge my phone and it never goes down. And after the three days, if you reach out for three days and it never goes down, at the end of that three days, and then it never comes back on, what happens to the person having the temperature, it's a major concern. So I was just trying to give up our adjustment, use this opportunity to provide that information. For since I was registered for Maryland, I would want to close my presentation by appealing to you to kindly allow the regulator to fund in these hearings, to supply and offer the specifics on the different expansion plan by Maryland and the regulator.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So we now go, I will start with for Maryland, the, the, the level of social, I will be my jury. So like this, please, yes, if we're being allowed, I will be my jury.
Thank you, thank you, Honorable Speaker.
We're too satisfied, we'll go to other counties, please.
Honorable Speaker, Deputy Speaker, fellow colleagues. Honorable Speaker, I'd like to say thank you for the recognition and particularly that I'm from Maryland County. I could join my colleagues to say thank you. But let me delineate my contribution to this debate in two portions. First, to the L T A, the post, uh, post the telecommunications and the L T C regulators and policy makers, uh, and actually is satisfied with your presentation, I'm downhearted. I don't think they came here to acknowledge the challenges of a G S M company. That is not what we anticipated from them, that is not what we want to hear. We want them to tell us how they are monitoring these S M, uh, G S M companies to do their work. And so I'm not satisfied with their presentation or promises that the G S M are making. Let me go to the G S M company. Honorable Speaker, fellow colleagues, it is now seven years that the G S M keep coming, coming before us and making promises. I remember in twenty eighteen, our communication pertaining to the same poor quality of their performances in Maryland County, they came, they made promises. I remember in twenty twenty-two, they came, they made promises. In fact, I remember in recent time, last year, they came, they made promises. I consider, I'm sorry to say, but I consider the G S M's behavior or their continuous promises to buy action to be especially particular to the value of Maryland. According to, let me digress a little bit. According to latest report, Maryland County is one of the important counties in Maryland in Liberia, and the people there, about eighty-five percent of the people, according to the report, live alone and down on a hill. And if that is so, you understand the living condition and the challenges the people are faced with. Yet and still, these people subscribe with their micro dollar on promotional or programs that these G S M.
Tell us a second, now tell us a second.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker. Allow me, because I'm from Maryland, and this is affecting us in particular in the entire region. These companies, last year, I remember, says, and they went out there to Maryland. I can still remember, I was in communication with Lou Star, when they, they made promises of restoration, and it didn't happen. Because of their, their, their services, the poor quality of the services, a pregnant woman died after the place, a call to the hospital, and the ambulance were going and trying to call the people for the location of the place, the woman died because of no signal on that particular day. Honorable Speaker, fellow colleagues, I remember intervening in the case with the university student, a class was asked to submit their final test by, uh, internet by, by Maryland prior to the expiration of the time, giving three days, no coverage. And I don't know why, perhaps they need to tell us how interconnected are their services. Once Lou Star is off, the next one, meaning all coverage will go off. And this is happening even last week. So what we are talking here, Honorable Speaker, is a serious matter in Maryland County. Orange, uh, uh, the gentleman, our representative, Orange came up here and he said there are eleven sites in a county that is eight hundred eighty-seven square miles. Can you imagine? If there are eleven sites and you are still using macro way to communicate from one town to the other, what are you telling us? You are, you are proving here the insufficiency of the quality of your services that you are providing in the county. There is something we always say, there is value for money. If, even if it is a cent, even if it is a dollar, even if it starts now, when it is paid, that value for the money should be returned to the person who pay. We always say, anything that is not done correctly is not done at all. If these people cannot provide services, let them go. It's better for them not to stop money from our people on their daily basis than to say they providing services where it's not adequate.
Thank you. Mr. Speaker.
Honorable Speaker.
Yeah, go ahead.
Honorable Deputy Speaker, my distinguished colleagues. I am concerned about few things, I'm not gonna go long, I'm gonna be very straight to the point, and then I will allow my colleagues to have their input. I firstly like to know from the L T A asking whether there is any customer service agreement between the L T A and the G S M companies. Now, the first thing I want to know, when I asked you the last time, I told you, you told me no, so I'm asking you openly on my oath, is there any customer service agreement with the L T A as one? The next thing is, I am very concerned about the manner and form in which our people all, we've been robbed by this material, what about us? We've been robbed and the entities, this place, specifically on, the dweller that lay in your community where they find it, they've been bringing it sick. If they struggle to ask you, ask for this, more than of two hundred to recharge. And the recharge that had to pay the cost for you, for example, Honorable Speaker, that was not there, the number is down for three, four days, and these companies were said here, they were not to pay the money. They are robbing our corporate millions of dollars. What they rob with. And I was indeed telling, who am the Commissioner?
Thank you, Honorable Speaker.
I was indeed telling who is the Commissioner, now that I've been, my lawyer, who is the one, and my police, they do it here. If only Maryland, we can cry, cry as a loss, and they just do that, robbing our people millions of dollars, and we will go along with, I have seen it all, five or six, and we're robbed of it all. And this is what, and let me speak up.
Omo Koga, Omo Koga, Omo Koga, please, Omo Koga. Yeah, after me, what can I, what can I tell you? Omo Koga, Omo Koga, Omo Koga. After Omo Koga, Omo Koga. Omo Koga, please go ahead, you have the floor.
Mr. Presari, all Presari, distinguished colleagues. Let me extend my thanks in appreciation to the proponent of this communication. But, uh, you gotta be cautious. If not, the essence for which these people were invited for will not be realized. Every one of us here, for this very constituency, are constituents and they are facing these problems, to allow every one of us to speak on the issue will not get fruitful results. Mr. Presari, if this issue, if this issue need results, the committee responsible for this sector, the committee responsible for this sector, this must be a reflection of them so that they will go in depth and they should be, they should be mandatory, on on the plan that are mandate.
And I have motion, and I have motion.
Let me be protected.
And I wait for, please, beg your input, I don't have time.
Excuse me, please, let me, let me have my day. Please, let me have my day.
Omo gentlemen.
The freem, the freem of the constitution did not make mistakes in the new formula where that even of a situation were around. And therefore, the constitution provide that each house to adopt a rule and some committees. The issue, the issue that we do, we can return. We have to die in the power of the committees.
Omo Chelsea.
Omo Chelsea.
Gonna give me chairs. Omo Koga, please. Allow me, Chelsea, what's your honor? What's your honor, Omo gentleman? Omo Chelsea, come for my honor, sir, come for my honor, sir. Don't look at me, sir, okay, you might, that's what I'm working, that's my man. Omo Chelsea, go ahead. What's your honor?
Yes, Honorable Speaker, Deputy Speaker, colleagues, my point of honor is that a gentleman from Nimac County was given the opportunity to contribute to this debate and not to tell us what is supposed to be done, say about rules within both houses. So he should speak to the matter on floor, that's my point of view.
Honor note, honor note, thank, thank you, Presari. Well, uh, distinguished, you please give me your own invaluable opinion, please. Mr. Presari, all Presari police, what I'm suggesting is subject to acceptance or rejection. And speaking, and speaking for the protocol fact that if no one real results, the plan that are be charged. So whatever is, at the end result, let the committee take charge of that issue. Thank you. Omo rookie, Omo rookie, Omo Koga. I'm coming. Yeah, I'm telling him, let us over leave, come on, gentlemen, let us speak more.
I, I have the mic, please.
You are never at the meeting so late.
Thank you, um, Honorable Speaker, Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker.
Please, Megan.
Distinguished colleague. Let me appreciate the proponent of this, uh, communication. Uh, I think this is something that we are all affected, you know, we are all, uh, affected, we, we, we have a serious issue with it. While I am from, uh, District One, Monclova County, and not from, from, uh, Maryland, but we have the same issue, so I have a question to ask, um, all of them, all of the invited guests out there. What does it require to have network in a community? I'm asking this question because basically that is a capital city of Monclova County, does that have network? I have been working with one or two parties at Orange, they've gone there to do assessment since last year, nothing has happened. The Lou Star Tower in, 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 uh, uh, Closerville, the wind blew it, you know, blew it down. I think they erected it, but still there, nothing has been done. In toward the, people have to claim hills or go claim trees, and that is in District One, in Monclova County. So I want to know what it requires for us to get network in, in, in our community.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, I move to Omo Yanku. Omo Yanku.
Honorable Speaker. Honorable, I'm not gonna even apologize.
Honorable Speaker.
This present issue, like, is, the purpose of which, when we invite them, witnesses here, if we have plenty of information that involve the quality of services for people. And based on that, I would like to add a few questions. Uh, the question I would ask is quite important. It tends to include in the quality of service, and it is the ability of services in the various countries, what plans specifically would tell them that those in the sector have, so that our, uh, uh, listeners out there can know exactly what they are, they are, they are offering. Specifically to, uh, the, maybe for post and telecommunications given the L T A. What quality control mechanisms you have in place to make sure that our people are receiving quality service? And lastly, what consumer protection you have in place so that when our people are robbed, they get their money back? Because these are the concerns, and you need to answer these questions so that our people who are listening to this debate can know exactly what they are offering. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Royal House, Omo Sookam. So now, let me, I thought it would hold the witnesses, but they don't.
Thank you. Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, distinguished colleagues, let me first commend my distinguished gentleman from Maryland, who is, uh, well articulated on Rattler Bank Communication Place on the floor. Let me thank also, uh, witnesses for coming today and for their presentation. First, let me clearly indicate that I'm disappointed that the corporation will come in here today, that they, they came here today and they've not provide specifics in terms of an investment plan, the target, and their accomplishment in the Southeast. The second thing is, we do not know, also clearly, the level of investment in terms of cost that you intend to deploy, and the purity, and your intervention. Let me clearly indicate here that as Maryland indicated, I'm always in Grand Chita County in Swedro City. It is bombarding, it's totally surprising that in a city of Swedro, you will have no network for almost a week as early as day before yesterday. I could not reach, it was impossible for anybody to reach any places in Swedro. I want to understand what is going on. We expect you to tell us the specific problem we are faced within those metro areas for which are not able to provide services and the entire city is in doubt in terms of communication. May I come to? May I come to add a specific question to LTA? The last time you note that the A's cable had a problem. What is the standard today about network in terms of the infrastructure? Are we only hanging on one thing? What is, what other infrastructure we have in place? And I want to join my colleagues and our close LTA, came here defending uh, the GSA company, I think it's happening or the regulator to come here and defend me by moving solutions, thank you. Omo Yanfobo, Omo Yanfobo. Omo Yanfobo, Omo Josie Williams. Then we go to the witnesses to respond to the five bars of questions. They will now come for the second one and then a wait for a bit of a while, not too long. Omo Yanfobo, please go ahead.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding, distinguished colleagues.
Omo Koga, please allow the governor here to speak. Well, after the second bar. Omo Yanfobo, please go ahead.
Thank you, Honorable Presiding. Your high, your time to filibuster, your please gave me my time to speak. I want to be specific to the universal access form that was mentioned. And I heard most of my colleagues talking about the southeast. I want to agree with Omo Ruky Barry, Mozzarella, and she's my closest neighbor to my giving Kakata belt. You won't be surprised to know that Kakata, that is just next door, we often have the same challenges when it comes to network. I remember in 2023, I engaged LTA because I know of a contract that was awarded to Kid Net Ghana in a ton of 2 million and 1.8 million was made available to enhance the work of the companies to help to reduce some of the troubles we are faced with today. When I engaged them, they built a tower in Division 34. But as I speak till today, the fire suppression, there is still no network. The communities that are there considering the hard labor of work that is done there. Many occasions will be calling for the pregnant women to come to the CH Reni Hospital, the small Bubba's, you know, at Waterfield, to know a bill. I got picturing evidence for our fights now where, where people were wounded and I will share with the journalists on the same thing. So I need LTA to tell us, give us a report. What are the work that was done in those counties? Because the agreement, the contract says the 50 rural counties. So Kakata, that is just us two through a way, we are the victims of these circumstances. And we're talking about the southeast, Mozzarella is just right here. I know what it is when you go to Boris's farm, when you try to go on a fire suppression, sometimes I get caught up there in the middle of nowhere, there's no network. Many occasions, sometimes I have a breakdown and there's no form of communication, you have to commute. And it takes over sometimes 30, 45 minutes to reach to somewhere with network. So I will ask LTA to tell us how that contract was awarded, the communities or the rural areas that benefited from it, where we are, where we are heading, and what we need to do as a government to ensure that we can get this matter to progress as soon as possible.
Thank you so much, Omo Josie Williams. Then we now go to the witnesses to join the five bars of questions.
Thank you, Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker colleagues. Honorable Speaker, today we are here again with the GSA companies. Last year, I tableled a letter and my communication commulated into plenary decisions that were conveyed directly to Lone Star Orange in the presence of LTA. And the plenary decided that both companies needed to take another actions, one of which I would like to highlight is the restitution to subscribers on their own expired minutes data and the money they lost in mobile money. It was very clear, unfortunately, the two companies appeared today, they said nothing about that. I'm interested in knowing how far have they gone with implementation of plenary decision? And for us, we will not take this matter for joke. Number two, the reason why they were brought here, they have not responded to that. What is the cause for the bad network? Unfortunately, the government institutions have failed us. Post-intellectual communication have come here to lecture on issues that for which we were not invited. LTA, once again, has failed us, has said nothing but to be protecting the businesses. They have not said anything. What is the cause for the bad network? They have not said anything. So I just want to hear from LTA and post-intellectual communication, what's in the law? What does the law say? When the GSA company erects a tower in a community, what does the law say about coverage? And we have to take that matter serious. Our people are suffering, our people are dying, in fact, the passion has increased. These people cannot be amassed in millions of dollars and we suffer. And they are not here, they are not here to get room to order companies, companies to come into our economy. So let us please respond to those concerns. Half of have they gone with plenary decisions? Half of have LTA and the Ministry of Post-Intellectual Communication gone with respect to their oversight of compliance, they have not said so.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. So to the witnesses, um, both our colleagues have expressed their grievances. But I want to be specific to four male lawmakers that asked questions that will be able to solve all the questions being asked. Questions asked by Omo Wutu Barry, questions asked by Omo Yanfobo, MSF Beaver, Ellen Atoa, and questions asked by Omo Josie Williams. Please, I beg your questioning. It will come with the questions, man, as I said. Yeah, it will come, it will come with the questions. So I will ask LTA to please attend these questions. After the second bar of questions, we will ask the regulator to please attend these questions. Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, members of the House of Representatives. Honorable Speaker, I left to invest the issue of the Knet that Omo Williams. This administration took over a contract that was signed by the past administration that had to do with Knet deployment of infrastructure in county, in Dington County. We review the contract on our level and eyes and bigger and bigger people assigned to the previous institution to look at the contract over. We review strongly that our contract need to look and look at and then see where it will continue with that contract. Honorable, where we stand today is that it brings me so big to Dubai, the infrastructure in those county. And the month that was tried to do the contract. And yet, it's difficult to explain more. What I want to say to that, I'm looking into that. And we think, well, we can put in, well, a complete profit, like there's not contract to be provided to benefit our people in this country, this contract. So, that's a response I will give to what that we cannot continue that contract that was written by the past administration. But we feel that the contract actually benefit our people in this country. It's also Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, I agree. That's a very good point. We are not here to defend the service provided. But from a policy angle, what is in our policy will show LTA to mend that to that reservation that we go in now with the policy. So LTA is here, they will speak to most of the people, the question that I meant asked. Honorable Speaker, I just want to respond to that question that you asked, that the contract was not provided down and we have a beginning, we want to make sure that we go go along with that contract that will benefit our people in this country. Thank you.
Mr. Speaker, distinguished members of the House, I would like to staff my distinguished, my Gibby County or any other member who specifically raised concern about the contract we have in Knet. The numbers on the contract, she said that we have decreased up to 1.8, 1.8 million against 2 million. So without thinking, it will appear that the government has already paid Knet all of the tonnings, so there should be no reason why Knet is asking what you were supposed to do or what they are supposed to do. So all men is continuing. And we cannot stand here before the peoples represented and create an impression that what we inherited, we will not take full responsibility for what we inherited. It will be unfair to the past administration and it will be unfair to us as well. But this is what we have on the books. Up to date, Knet is claiming that we owe them up to, up to a dollar over 600,000 on different charges. Some of those claims, and like the minister mentioned, some of those claims, I will be a little bit skeptical, I will be definite on it. But from our side as a regulator and who is representing government on the implementation of our contract, we have some reservation. It would be premature for me to say here what definitely it is until we reach the end of the investigation. But I can say here for the sake of the hearing, since I'm honored to that for the LTA, we have some serious reservation. Those reservations that we have, they are not ready. So I cannot stay here and say Knet is guilty, but I can say that we have some reservation. On the implementation of the, of the, of the Knet contracts, we have uh, two more counties, actually two or three more counties, but I know we still have Riverses left and then we have Lofa. Some of the counties, Mr. Presiding and honorable members, some of the counties, if I were to put one tower in, and we do respect here to all the regions, but if I were to put one tower in Riverses, the coverage of that one tower possibly will appear that Riverses has adequate service compared to putting one tower with a seat capacity in Nima. The contract has one tower per county, no matter how big the county is. So if the LTA tells you that we already have one tower in my Gibby, the right thing is that tower could be in a location that was not covered Kakata City like you are talking about, and it will appear as the Knet is in my Gibby, but Kakata is not covered. That means it's possible that my Gibby, because of the size, can have been covered by one, by one tower. And therefore, in our last, in our last request for the universal access form, the LTA, under the universal access form, requests additional 500,000 because if we complete a contract on our Knet, we are still going to have adequate service, at least for the universal access provision, not the energy. So in all words, the towers are in one per county, but it's not, it's not, it's not, it's not true. Secondly, some of those towers that were built by, by Knet, there are few that I'm aware of that are even down. Knet cannot come back to the maintenance of their own community. Cannot come back here to go to the southeast and put on those towers, because we still have almost 700,000 for them, which we are disputing. But I can say here that this question has been filed, hopefully very soon, I'm saying very soon, without being specific, that these issues are going to be resolved. But to that speaker and explain, members of the House, if we need to get 100% what would happen with the project on our Knet, we still have, they need to go. Additionally, what are we doing as a regulator to make sure that the companies have provided quality of service? Few months ago, we had a request from Orange that they were having jam on the data, they didn't technology. The LTA didn't mean a given additional person. Hopefully, those who can follow the quality of service, and somebody don't. You don't pick the individual, the individual part, but you will realize that because we offer that person additional capacity, they, they jam on the data, they don't believe in the quality of service increased, but it's difficult to pick up those small digits. And I'm probably this more because in the whole country, improving in one location receive a door in the gap, in the ocean. And just like the hospital, it is not in my place after here to raise the price for the company. There's only one thing I can do here. If a company makes a presentation that is true, I'm honored to it would be unfair for me to say their presentation is untrue. If they say something that is untrue, it would be unfair for me to say it's true, it's true, because in our place and life, the honor of the House of the House. So I'm simply here to say, if they say something is true, the Presiding is in possession of a presentation I made to him, from, from specific data, activity on Maryland. The companies have a whole line here for the whole project. But the ones who are asked to focus on Maryland have presented to the Presiding something that is activity points to what is happening in Maryland. Mr. Presiding, and explain, members of the House. A couple of months ago, we signed a consumer protection regulation. Like I said, if anybody does regulation, if you have promotional services, for example, give me 1 hour and I will give you for the family for three days. You go and recharge and it never goes down the city. The system is programmed, or it is a requirement that once the three days go, the three days expire. But the man would pay 1 hour if you have access to three days free, now free for me, they free, they are free. The fact, you bought it on the very day you bought it, they never went down. When it never is restored, it is required on the consumer protection regulation that that person to be respected. We have, we have, I told that there was a committee hearing before, or plenary, I'm not sure whether it was, either a committee hearing. And the companies, particularly Orange, has informed us, and I'm saying has informed us, that they were able to, to uh, to show that their technology is doing away where the costs are refunded. By that time, it was, it was just a policy now, it had become a regulation. So if you have any concerns for the communities, it would be important that we have, we have a consumer help desk. 2244. 2244. The first time 2244 is available, that call will come to the LTA and the companies.
Your information, the hospital.
Honorable Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, the same as we say. My information I just got to do with the fact that the commissioner cannot be telling we, members, that we need to call 2244. It is the public that needs to know. The fact that the public do not know means that this 2244 has not been effective. So we would urge them to be more effective.
Yeah, no time.
Thank you.
Mr. Speaker, Honorable Deputy Speaker, explain, members of the House. I am, I am only determining planned hearing, because I'm, I'm testing by it for you. And that information that they leave is, is relevant to the hearing. The LTA even has a plan now. In our next year, we are planning to have three regional hubs. So, the 2244 I'm reading is already in the public, but sometimes information will not go as, people will not receive it the same in a city. But this information is not just to you, it's to the public. And it is already in the public. We have said it, we have, uh, we have, uh, we have, uh, we have a talk show, we have said it. But at our level, we believe that information in force rather than not, not even may, definitely they value that for, for the entire country. So, because of that, we are these things are happening. We have been done it yet, but it's not a plan, but we have three people. I'm sure we have one in, uh, in bombing, to take out the West River and Banga to take out the Avaya in, in Kano for the rest of the, it is insufficient and I think. It is, it is insufficient and I think, but it takes us one step closer to the, to the, to the public. So, these are some of the things that we are doing. The honor of this consumer protection, uh, regulation. It still needs to have, like you have protection privacy. So, if you make one point I want to know it, I can just go and get your information. Even if you ask, it will not give it onto the code already. Before it was not a law, now it's a law. So, these are some of the steps, they do, I want to emphasize. What it takes to build network, the honorable from Osvaldo, from Gary, asked that in Bensyville, the Tati Dust City doesn't have coverage. What it takes to extend network. I will be as frank as possible. Some of these things are also based on the business projection. And I'm not saying that every place without coverage is because of business projection. No, I'm saying some of the variables that go in the calculation, in business projection. But if the companies plan, a business plan, and they say, no, we cannot be in Kakata.
Mr. President, Mr. Paul President, colleagues. Mr. President, I want to inform the witnesses that freedom of speech, freedom of expression, freedom of information is a fundamental right. Being a fundamental right, that's why companies are contributing some of their revenue in the form of universal access fund to be able to expand their network to places that may not have the capacity to address the issue of revenue return. So, our people in both countries, our people in West Point, our people in Barrow, our people in Javelin, in every part of the Republic of Liberia to have access to communication. So, Mr. Regulator, as the chairman of this committee, we are calling on the post-internet communication. We are also calling on LTA, including the MMO.
Is that information?
To ensure, yeah. To ensure. To ensure that the issue, to ensure that the issue of revenue on the construction of tower should not be the essence of the interest of our people getting free and affordable telecommunications, that's the information I want to get.
Information noted. We may continue, we are too.
Okay, so, uh, honorable speaker, uh, honorable deputy speaker extending members of the House. The information is, is valuable, I, I just, uh, we are chair, I'm the lead. What I was saying basically is that the companies and they make their projections, where from Marshall, Restipendent doesn't, and other would reach, they're counting in the water as a effort.
Yes, please move the issue.
So, if they are not in Bensyville, it would be wrong for me to say, yes, yes. This is the reason why Orange is not in Bensyville in this, in this hearing. But that is, uh, is an information to us. We can take that and, and ask them, I'm just hearing that they are not in Bensyville. Even as a regulator, we, we make everyone to have information of all of this every situation in the country, but the reality is, if it never went down in Bensyville this morning, except by information from the mean, sometimes I will not know it. If I count my attention, then it compares me now to take, yeah, it, it compares me now to take it and address the, the, uh, the companies. Because especially if you as a regulator, I know it's difficult to go in the, in the outside of the, of the, of the country, it deserve it. But in Bensyville, it would be my imagination. I'm just hearing it, it is my imagination, but I think to the company was more fair to ask them why they are not here and then to sign the universal access. Again, the universal access, we have two, two more to do. And still Riverses and go for adding some continuation of what started for the other company, the former government. And we have additional funding for the universal access. And in this case, we hope that it can clear the attention of the central government to in addition to what the companies are contributing to the universal access that government herself put money in the development.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, Ellen Ator.
Yeah, if the witness should say that they have two more to do, they in my mind, you be telling the company that what they did. It was done effectively and efficiently, and what they did in my GBI, it has never worked. It has, it never worked. So, it should be clear that they mounted a tower, but it never worked in terms of communication. So, it has to be made clear. We don't want them to just come and put the towers up and we don't have the services that comes with the tower being mounted.
So, wait a minute, you got two more seconds.
Okay, so, in two seconds, so maybe I should be working the bar, in two seconds, Mr. President. Uh, in two seconds, I'd like to say that the information from Maryland will be taken extremely, uh, will be taken very seriously. And as I have promised, the president, my extension, the members of the House, that beyond these hearings, we take this matter and address it as the president would did or as planned earlier would did. Beyond this, beyond the Maryland issue, all our information have come to our attention, including the bus access and the Knet project. Beyond this, Mr. President, we will even if it's on the day-to-day basis, while this effort will give you feedback on the steps we are taking to resolve, resolve these issues. That is the commitment and I promise that we serve.
Thank you very much. I will call you, I will ask, permission to answer your way forward. We, we deliver aid up on the state, so our, 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 I think the thing, uh, more of a way forward, but before then, I will call our issues, I will address the issue, we will blend. Then we take our way forward from the councilor, the mayor of Thomas.
Serious issue that I was trying to bring up to the issue of the regulator LTA. Though, uh, they will still be invited here, but I think when they are coming today, I want to see some authority to inform nowadays information. LTA, I don't know who have the contract for the cable lab connection in Bone County, particularly from Banga to Butota using the Koyar corridor. The tele, the, the, the internet cable from Banga to Butota, it is, it is them placed there, I don't know how to describe it. LTA, you understand what I'm saying there? LTA? You hear me?
Go ahead.
I'm saying from Banga to Butota, we don't know who has them hired to do the, the installation of the cable, the telecommunications, internet cable lab. But if you look there, forgive me now. They are cutting the lines, somebody in pantry, somebody in the trees, and we can just understand it. I completed the work. Between Sabe, between Sabe, we need to connect to Tapata. Right now, the, the cable is short, because a tree fell there. The tree cut the cable. So, I'm just wondering, if the process is not completed and that start to happen, what happen when the process is completed, when they turn their back? So, begging you up, we do not want to reach at a point that they will call you in when the people cannot allow them to work any longer. They should be able to do the work in a way that will be able to serve the people thereby cutting those necessary trees or, uh, or, blockage or each of obstacles on the way that will enable the, the cable to go for as long as possible as compared to chopping a tree, pantry, anywhere the passing, which is not going to still for a longer period of time. So, I tell you why I provide that information, I hope and pray.
Thank you, thank you, thank. When I get one, one issue from a priest trainer and, from a priest trainer and Steve Tippa, one mini issue, it will go to Magatama to make a way for.
I want to tell about, thank you so much for bringing up this issue, we are treating this in here, we are treating. Even if we live in a country that is a problem. But obviously, we are talking about here, also the regulator, the board is here, the director, the service coordinator. We are talking about the cost benefit analysis, I said, next, we are talking about the money. Our concern is the value of money. This issue raised by the Maryland authorities, who is said to provide it's quality. We will talk, we heard about the universal access that we should regularly keep it in place for, that put forth a defense and my, our mother, uh, I thought it would be some correction, which they cannot keep, we cannot see nothing. Very spectrum, quite, they are not pretending this people. All right, the service of the government, they will quickly provide it, uh, people. The chairs and companies are lost there, like with the, the bank is horrible.